That is a sack lunch. Okay. I mean, I read through everything.
No, no kidding. Nobody had a hoe to trade for the apples.
Okay, that's the only thing that's happening here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, then I've studied.
As the poop show begins.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Yep. And this.
Mm hmm. Nice, huh? Hey, I'm glad somebody is like telling us how to do our job.
I read it.
Not like we could figure it out on our own. I'm gonna take notes on the computer. I'm gonna use the computer.
Mm hmm. I've read through everything. Everything.
I called them all. Interviewed them.
Mm hmm.
Are we ready to go?
All right. I didn't see this.
Okay, let's bring this city council workshop for March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four to order. Please rise for pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hubler.
Here.
Councilmember McClemmons.
Present.
Councilmember Roach.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
Okay, we now have a review of the council minutes. Councilmember Fullerton?
Yes, I did not see any corrections.
Excellent. All right, agenda items. We will now have our mayor vacancy interviews. Please remember that we will follow the rules of decorum and Article ten of the council policies and procedures that is for all council meetings and workshops. The interview process is we will have candidates go and wait in the lobby until they are called in, called in, except for any current council members that have placed an application. They will remain here for the entirety of the interview since they are also, will also be placing their votes. I will ask Mr. Vodapitch to ask the next candidate to please come in for their interview. The candidate will have five minutes to introduce themselves and to give us a little bit about their background while covering the six questions that were included in the application. The council will have ten minutes to ask any additional questions. Please remember, all candidates need to be asked the same questions. We cannot ask specific questions that only apply to a specific candidate. There are some suggested supplemental questions that are included in the packet council was given. Afterwards, the candidate will be asked to please go back into the lobby and the next candidate will be asked in until the last candidate is done. Afterwards, all candidates will be asked back in and council will discuss the qualifications of each. You can do that in executive session. A council will then take nominations and a vote. Once we have a candidate with four votes, we will appoint them and have them sworn in. We will start with any current council members and will then interview candidates based on when their applications were submitted. So would all candidates please stand and go to the lobby until Mr. Vodapitch calls you in?
Better questions?
Oh, yes, sir.
Um, it seems to be kind of odd that, you know, there's a couple of council members that are actually applying, as my understanding yourself and Councilmember Hubler.
Correct.
So if you're not going to leave the room, why are the other people going to leave the room?
This is what was put together by the clerk's office. I'm guessing this is because of the typical.
Well, I would understand that to be true with a normal process, but since it's kind of odd that actually only two of you guys are, you know.
Yeah.
Is it possible for them to stay? It seems appropriate to me. I don't know.
You can.
Can I make a motion that we allow the applicants to stay during the interview process?
Certainly, you can make that motion. Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? That's more of a climate.
Um, I think the intent of the rule is to give an unfair advantage to the applicant so that the first person doesn't pave the way for questions, right, for the last candidate? So I would, I would appreciate it if, if we go in this order, I believe that's probably approach, appropriate because I think those people understand the process. Right? But other than that, that was my concern about having people here.
Discussion? Okay, there's been a motion on the table. All those in favor of allowing all the candidates to stay in the room during the interviews, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Frank? Never mind. Thank you, everyone. Let's see, no advancement here. Uh, so I am the first candidate. So on the time of date and submission, next will be council member. So I'll just read it here. I am first Kerry Hubler, Councilmember Hubler is second. Justin Evans is third, Broderick Ford is fourth, Chris Blanco is fifth, and then Esteban Carbahal, I hope I said that right, would be sixth. Okay, so I guess we'll get on with the awkwardness.
Yeah, I know, right? Situation ever.
Yep, sure can. Yeah.
Thank you.
There you go.
I've got down those.
Yeah, fellow veteran.
Council, um, while Deputy Mayor Carter is in the hot seat, who did you want to have calling on council members to ask questions?
I nominate Kelly McClemmons. To be in.
No, that sounds good to me.
Okay, we just need to decide who's going to do it.
Yeah.
Just for this one.
Sure.
Candidate.
Excuse me, counsel, what, what am I doing?
When council members raise their hand to ask questions, you'll be calling on them.
Oh.
We just need someone to do it.
Deputy Mayor, while the mayor is, okay.
The mayor, we don't have a mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
There you go.
Yes.
Go.
Pro, pro, pro.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, uh, counsel, I passed out some certificates or whatnot in regards to leadership qualifications, trainings that I've gone to. Uh, my name is Terry Carter. I am the current deputy mayor for the city of Bonnie Lake. I've served on the city council for the last six years. Uh, I was elected in two thousand seventeen and I was reelected, uh, what, two years ago. Uh, at that time, uh, I was elected by the council to be the deputy mayor. And then in January of this year, I was reelected by the council to continue on as the deputy mayor. A little history on me is I am a police officer. I worked for the Edumclaw Police Department. I started back in nineteen ninety-eight as a reserve officer. I got hired full-time by Edumclaw in two thousand. Uh, in two thousand four, I came to the city of Bonnie Lake and I worked here for eight and a half years. I did a ton of odd things, different things, uh, including SWAT team, PIO, which is a public information officer, FTO, which is a field training officer, so I trained officers or whatnot here. An instructor and EVOC and emergency vehicle operations and less lethal things and a bunch of stuff, basically. In two thousand fourteen, I went to the city of Algonah. And then in two thousand fifteen, for about a year, about two thousand fifteen, I went to the city of Pacific where I've been ever since. In two thousand sixteen, I was promoted to detective in twenty, let's see, twenty twenty-three, I was promoted to full-time to sergeant. And that's where I currently serve, uh, is for my, my full-time job. Uh, as for some, some of the reasons that I ran, uh, for council is that I was requested to by officers and staff here at the city who felt like there was, maybe they weren't being represented as well as they could have been. Uh, and so after a couple of times of being asked, I finally threw my, my hat in the rain. I ended up winning, coming in and realizing that I needed to do something positive for my community and for the city. And so I started learning as much as I could from other council members and, and other staff and whatnot. So, um, I believe I'm going to get into the, uh, the why do you want to be mayor deal here, which is essentially, I think I can do the most good in that particular position. The reason for that is that there's a, an opportunity to set mission, vision and values for the city that I think is important, that we have a direction. Uh, I have a vision for the city both internally and externally. Internally, it's to set a culture that is positive, where we don't backbite on each other and we move forward together. We are, we're a family. I think we do better for the citizens when we are close and not nitpicking each other. I think that just turns into a, a fight for everything and it's a, it becomes a problem. I think there's been some things that have been festering that need to be fixed, so I want to take care of that. So I think there's an opportunity to look at the positions and how their, how the structure of the city is, is set up. Um, I don't know if it would be better or worse if I did something or not. So I think it's an opportunity to really take a look at it to determine, you know, what's the most efficient way to run the government. And I want to work to learn and see if there's a way to figure, figure out how to get through some of the permitting issues and, and things that I know has been a plague for some citizens within the, uh, the city. I've heard a lot of complaints about that. Obviously, we hear complaints about water rates and that kind of stuff, too, so.
One minute left.
Thank you. I better move quick then. So what experiences, talents and skills do I have? Uh, I've been a resident for twenty years, experienced as a police officer for the city of Bonnie Lake, experienced as a council member for six years, uh, an ability to remove emotion from my decision-making process and deal with the issue at hand. Are there any community issues in which you have particular interest or expertise? I would say public safety, parks specifically in regards to like the Reed property and MRFC, creating public and private partnerships. I think they do more for government than government does for them. So I think that it's an opportunity to again, be more efficient with our dollars to get more. What experience do you have serving as a people manager or executive? I currently am a patrol shift sergeant and over the investigative unit. But I also have served as a account rep for Securitas for a seven million dollar account with.
And that is time.
Okay. A hundred and twenty employees. Thank you. So I guess I'll go to council if they have questions and we can continue.
Carrie, do you want to start?
Uh, yes, so the mayor often spends ten to thirty hours per week during the workday attending to city business. Do you have the capacity in your schedule to be available some weekdays during business hours to perform the day duties of mayor?
Yes, I do. Uh, I'm currently, I said, a sergeant at the police department. I'm kind of filling a couple roles and so my, my chief, actually he was here today, has been very flexible with my schedule and whatnot. We've talked about this. And so this is something that I can make time in my schedule for. I'm typically off on Mondays, so my thought would be I'd be around most Mondays and then in the mornings, uh, I can try and be around as well. If I'm able to kind of flex the schedule.
At a recent council meeting, it was brought up that whoever we appoint as mayor should be electable. So for the sake of transparency and respecting the voice of the people of Bonnie Lake, have you ever run for public office and lost an election?
No.
All right, I guess we should have coordinated our questions. And, uh, so I've, I've done this probably eight or nine times at the council or county council level. But the one question I will always ask is, we'll make the appointment, but then they do have to stand for election. So why are you the, the best candidate to be able to retain the seat? Get it?
Yeah, I, I think that again, my vision for the city, both internally with the culture aspect of it and with the external vision of what I would like to see of the city is that we work public-private partnerships, we network, we talk to people and we set up opportunities for the city to have an identity, right? So I think we need community and an identity and the identity currently is kind of a strip mall. And I, I, that's not my favorite. I would like to see you have a downtown kind of thing. I think that downtown is in the WSC Forest area, kind of behind Safeway. I've kind of been on that train for a while of what I would like to see there. I think there's an opportunity, as, as you know, since we'll be sitting, talking to, uh, people tomorrow in regards to some of this, the park, Midtown Park, getting that built out in that same area. And there's an opportunity to discuss and change some things, even though, you know, maybe a, a relationship there in the past has been strained. And so I think it's important to talk and get those things out so that when they come in front of council in the future, that there's an actual plan to move forward. So I would say, um, my vision for, for the city is, is a downtown. And then secondarily, um, working with MRFC, MRAC, uh, to either have them lease the Reed property, so a twenty-acre parcel just outside of town, that the city owns, uh, to build a park, something that they want to do, and, uh, having them help out with the recreation, uh, deal. I'm afraid right now with the current budget, the way things are, is that we're losing about six hundred thousand dollars on recreation. And we all want to keep recreation. I don't think anybody wants to get rid of it. So we have to find a way to move forward and I think the way forward is a public-private partnership. We have somebody who's willing to do it and they've, they've jumped in wholeheartedly. And so I, I see that coming together. It's just a matter of timing on, on some things. So, did I answer your question? I want to make sure I got it.
Need some direction, counsel? So is there a limit on the response? I mean.
There's ten minutes total, so.
Okay.
We're done, okay.
Just under six minutes.
So can you explain under what conditions you would, uh, you would, uh, allow condemnation proceedings to occur?
That would be very difficult for me to actually vote to do that. I'm against condemnation, uh, for a lot of reasons. I think it's a taking of people's property that they have paid for and pay taxes on and, and all that kind of stuff and have, have built a future on. So I'm typically against it. I think the only way would be for something that would be, you know, I'm guessing, I can't even say a freeway or something that was coming through, but I can't even imagine it. And even then, I think there's an opportunity for the city to pay, you know, fair market value essentially or weight and get it later. So I would say, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty much against that.
Um, how does the executive branch stay in its lane in relation to the legislative body?
So the legislative body typically gives, uh, they pass an ordinance, they pass a resolution, give us direction. And the executive's job is to carry out that vision. So if you pass a resolution ordinance, say, we want to go this way, we want to do this, then it's the executive's job to do that, follow that, that lead. How that happens, I think, is, is the executive's job. That's their job to figure that out. Like, how do we make that happen for the council? Because they're the ones that gave us direction to do that.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
None, okay. All right, well, can I, uh, use the rest of my time to answer the other questions here?
Sure.
Okay.
My mind.
There's four minutes.
Okay. So anyway, I was talking about, I, I worked as an account manager for Securitas with seven million dollar account, running the downtown bus tunnel, a hundred security officers and the rapid-ride buses with twenty federal enforcement officers, managed union issues with SEIU union and whatnot, including payroll, hiring, firing, promotions, et cetera. Uh, how do you view the role of the mayor in terms of relationship with the city council? I think I answered that one. Uh, and the mayor often, we got this one, too, is they attend to thirty hours, uh, per week. So I think we got through them all. So thank you, counsel. I appreciate it.
He has the shortest pro tem seat. You've been unprotemed. Congratulations. Very good.
All right, uh, next is Councilmember Hubler. All right, I guess we'll start, uh, I'll give you the opportunity to start here. Are you ready for the timer? Okay, very good.
When I moved to Bonnie Lake, I became integrated into the community right away. I am actively engaged in our city. I planned out our entire homecoming parade along with Chief Jeter and Mayor Johnson. Took that to the principal in two thousand twenty. During COVID, got the no. During, right after COVID in two thousand twenty-one, I got the yes. But I had six days to plan a homecoming parade for the city. I pulled that off, um, and it was huge success. And since then, it has grown tremendously the last three years. We are already planning for the two thousand twenty-four parade. I also organize and run the Holiday Bazaar at Bonnie Lake High School as, and have done that for the last eight years. It is a great way for people outside of our community to see our community and to know more about our high school and what Bonnie Lake has to offer. Since two thousand sixteen, I organized volunteers at both Bonnie Lake High School and Sumner High School and MRFC out at White River Amphitheater from May through September. All these groups use this as a fundraising opportunity. Um, I meet with the principal, our athletic director, our ASB advisor each year, many times to plan our parade, our football season activities. I organized the food truck rally this last year at Bonnie Lake High School during all of the football games. That is the first high school that we are aware of that has ever been able to do that. And we figured out a plan on how to keep our students safe and to be able to allow for, um, food trucks to come in and people take food in and out of the stadium. I'm also the lead planner for the class two thousand twenty-four Safe and Sober Grad Night Party. I have love the opportunity to keep our kids safe and find every opportunity to be actively engaged in our high school. I have built the relationships in our city. I go to the stores, I talk with businesses, I talk to the staff and citizens. I've built positive relationships with our school administrators, our staff, our teachers, as well as our district leaders. I've built trust amongst a lot of the youth in our community as well. I feel as mayor, I can build a stronger community by being engaged with our citizens, our schools and our businesses, as well as being engaged with our staff. I have one of the largest Girl Scout troops in our city for the last eleven years because I am a great leader and mentor to the youth and adults should do trust me. I have been a leader for eleven years with Beautify Bonnie Lake. This year alone, I was asked by school district, um, staff to be on a math curriculum committee at the school district and the CTE advisory panel for, um, our school district. And those are teachers that have asked me to be on those panels, uh, because they do trust me. Myself and another, um, local resident are actually the ones that brought MRAC and into the city's discussions. When, um, the city was, the council at the time was trying to get rid of the recreation program, the before and after school programs, I helped make the introductions to make sure that MRFC was involved and made sure that those talks were started so that we could figure out how to build a recreation program without getting rid of it. And, uh, we organized large groups to come to council meetings to help talk with our council at the time to ensure that people's voices were being heard. I want to build our city to be what it truly can be, a family-friendly community full of activities and people that come together, together to celebrate. We can be more interactive, interconnected under the right leadership. A mayor doesn't make the rules. That person works with staff in the community to follow them and guide them through, to follow budgets and build relationships. I am willing and able to put the time and effort into.
One minute?
With our city, our council and our community members to build a better and brighter future for Bonnie Lake. I will be out in our community meeting, our business owners, our groups, our parents. With my background being in business management and finance, I do understand better than most how to run the city. I know how to make an effective budget work and how to be careful with the money we have. I currently own my own business and started that with my husband with our own money. And I am working on growing that as well. This all shows that I do know how to be a great leader, successfully run a business and build a strong foundation for our community. That's it. Sorry.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Fullerton, you want to start this time?
At a recent city council meeting, it was brought up that whoever we appoint as mayor should be electable. So for the sake of transparency and respecting the voice of the people of Bonnie Lake, have you ever run for a public office and lost an election?
Yes.
And my question is, what makes you the, the best candidate to be able to retain that seat once you're appointed there?
I believe it's because of the relationships that I have built within our city and our community. I have a lot of strengths when it comes to talking to our community, making sure that our staff feel heard. I have already shown that within my own business, that I have a, a good, positive relationship with my own staff. I work hard. I make sure that I am effective in everything that I do. That's a good question. And I believe the, being able to be integral into what we have and be able to build a, a good community around us, um, where the people feel like they are heard, where the people feel like they are a positive part of what we do, is really important. And I know that I do have that ability and I've already been working on that with our citizens and our school district and our staff.
Uh, my question is, uh, what have you learned from going through this process?
There is a lot. That being able to communicate no matter your differences, being able to work together no matter your differences and being able to be open and honest is one of the most important things that we all can do as individuals. So I think, um, something that I've really learned is that it doesn't matter who likes who or who doesn't like who. It matters that we all can work together and make sure that our city runs more efficiently.
Refinings?
So, uh, under what conditions would you support condemnation?
I don't believe in condemnation, but I know you've asked before about the, um, taking people's property. I don't feel that we should ever take someone's property. I know that there are instances like that we have a roundabout that is a possibility in the future coming in, um, at the Angeline intersection and that could possibly have to, um, take some property from the Kelly Farm area. And if that did happen, that we as a city would need to pay Kelly Farm for that piece of property that we would be taking. But just taking it outright, I don't feel that's right. Okay, um, how does the executive branch stay in its lane in relation to the legislative body? Not that question. Um, that was in my speech. I, the legislative body as a city council is the ones that makes the rules. They come up with the ordinances and everything that needs to be followed with in our city. And the mayor's job is to guide the staff and guide the citizens along the way and to make sure that we are following what those rules are and never, not that we can't question it as an executive or as the, um, the executive branch, but that, um, we can work together to make sure that we're always following whatever the, the legislative branch is asking to be done.
Ms. Swatman?
I have no questions currently. Thank you.
That's true. Yeah, thank you.
All right.
I do have a question for myself, since I asked it earlier and I'm going to ask it to everybody else, is the hours that are entailed in being a city council member, it is very important that we spend that time with our council. We know that it's, uh, been not as well managed. been not as well managed for the last couple of years. And we want to make sure that our staff know that they are appreciated and known that they have somebody in their corner to help them and fight for them and be part of them. And because I have that ability and the time to be able to move my schedule and be as flexible as I want since I make my own schedule. So I do have the time to put that 10 to 30 hours a week into everything I do within the mayor's position.
Still five minutes.
Well, let's go through, I guess. Let's see. What strengths do I bring to the council? Let's talk about these. Talking to others is a key part of my personality. I am understanding, open, and decisive, as well as a quick learner. I work hard, effectively communicate, and love building relationships with everyone I meet while working on teams on different boards and committees. As a former CFO and general manager, I have the experience to keep a balanced budget and be effective with the use of tax dollars to help with future growth and community events as well as complete, as a complete understanding of business management. I have a deep understanding and connection with the civil service positions, as my husband is a firefighter. And I share in the concerns for public safety, first responders, and the struggles that they all face. And I have an ease at garnering support and rallying the people around an important issue. I get a lot done in our city. I don't sit back, twiddle my thumbs, and feel like somebody else needs to do it for me. I truly get out there and with my whole heart and passion, I make sure that we get kids off the streets. I work to make sure that we have ways to integrate into our city with the youth. Things that I do want to see is a community center. I want to see a community center come into the city where our kids can get out there and hopefully keep them off drugs, hopefully keep them out of gangs, hopefully keep gang violence out of our city. There is gang violence down in Sumner already. We need to work together to keep that out of here. I think we need more recreation programs with our youth and adults, not just our youth. I think keeping our parks, completing them, getting a vision put together. I think that we have this perfect area down here that is like pretty vacant, that that would be a great area for a downtown area, I think, being the core around our library. We have apartments here. I think that would be great. We already have the property. So let's build that as our downtown. Let's work together with private organizations to build a downtown where people can walk around and shop and do the things that they want to do. And maybe it's apartments above and housing, you know, or a mixed use.
Two and a half minutes.
Okay, well, I'm done.
If you want it.
I'm done.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. Mr. Justin Evans?
All right. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, council staff, and everyone in attendance. I just want to show some gratitude. Having been through four council member appointments, I understand the gravity and decision you guys have before you tonight. I believe you all know me, you know my candor, my integrity, and my commitment to this community. But please bear with me if I appear uncomfortable sitting before you tonight. You know, I'm no stranger to talking to you. However, I'm one for more inclusive language, we, us, community. But tonight, unfortunately, I, me, and myself are going to be more present than I'm comfortable with. I've worked with each and every one of you personally and professionally at some point over the last eight years. I've worked side by side with you on community projects, encouraged some of your runs for elected office, and spent time with you after winning to ensure you had the best opportunities for success upon arrival to this council. As you can see from my resume, my qualifications of municipal leadership are greater than anyone else you'll interview tonight. I've won two elections with the city council, with the city of Bonnie Lake, the first with nearly 60% of the vote and the second with over 94% while running unopposed. I have eight years of local government experience with this council, eight years regional experience with the Pierce County Regional Council, and have sat in leadership roles in both. I've been through four budget cycles and have played an integral part in the retreats and breaking down departmental expenditures along with scrutinizing spending and decision card reviews. As deputy mayor, I chaired around two dozen council and workshop meetings. And as Chair of Finance and Public Safety, along with being members of both of those and the now dissolved Economic Development Committee, I've attended and chaired over 650 council meetings in Bonnie Lake. That along with about 100 meetings with the Pierce County Regional Council and the Puget Sound Regional Council. I'm the only applicant with this extent of experience, which is all 100% directly applicable to the city of Bonnie Lake. As you can see from the letters of recommendation you receive, I'm supported by many prominent leaders in our community. I've had phone calls and support from other elected officials, current city staff, former city staff, along with support by individual police officers of Bonnie Lake and sheriff deputies of Pierce County. In my tenure with the county, I've worked, or with the city, I've worked with three police chiefs, two city administrators, two clerks, three HR directors, 12 different council members, four public works and community development directors, two mayors, two city attorneys, and one CFO. I have the ability to work well with staff and I've shown that from time to time again. On community, I'm here before you tonight as a servant leader in this community, having attended all the graduating classes from our police academy for all of the police officers that graduated while I was on council. I've attended every police department swearing in, promotional swearing in, retirement party, including just one yesterday, national night out, Taste of Taps, tree lighting, homecoming events, Bonnie Lake Day, salute to armed forces, including over 50 concerts in the park, city staff chili cook-offs, food for thought, team building events. I've done five different ride-alongs with five different Bonnie Lake police officers and even a ride along with East Pierce Fire and Rescue. I was a resident volunteer with Mountain View Fire and Rescue, District 44, for over five years, serving as a firefighter there. I've served on boards of the Greater Bonnie Lake Veterans Memorial Foundation, Sumner Bonnie Lake School District Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board, Good Roots Northwest, and even as Chair, Vice Chair, and Volunteer Coordinator for Beautify Bonnie Lake for the last 10 years. You may want to know what vision I'll bring to the city of Bonnie Lake. It's community first. As a parent, like many of you, I want to know that our daughter has a safe place to grow, play, learn, live, and thrive. It's vital that Bonnie Lake remains that to everyone. This comes from quality proactive police community engagement of our youth, school resource officers, and meeting our youth where they're at. It's ensuring our parks can grow and flourish in our area. And it's making sure small businesses can grow and thrive without the restraints of burdensome red tape. It's having partnerships with our school districts and that build trust in our community. It's being someone our parents could be proud of. When it comes to passion, passion is not an input. Too often, people think we need passion to do something. That's not true. Passion is an output. Passion is something that is created when value, when you feel valued and fulfilled. These past two years have shown a lack of leadership that can engage staff and reactivate that spark that adds fulfillment and value to their work. It's caused great employees to search out employment elsewhere as a result.
One minute?
We don't need more complacency. We need a leader who can bring value back. In ways of executive leadership, I have already achieved both my certificates in municipal and advanced municipal leadership with the Association of Washington Cities. I've attended the annual AWC conference in person and on site. I'm familiar with the city staff policies, procedures, along with current facing problems and future problems in regards to funding and projects. I'm familiar with the Sturgis and Roberts Rules of Orders, having applied both during my leadership roles here and in various regional groups. And additionally, I've been a part of the crafting and adoption of the rules this council currently abides by today. As you can see from my letters of support and our shared interactions, I'm careful to listen and often last to speak. The best way to be fully informed is to keep an open mind and allow everyone to share their concerns before making a decision. In conclusion, I'll always give you, I'll always get the details and I'll always do the work. You've all seen the depth at which I will go on even the smallest item to ensure it's accurate and people are held accountable for it. However, make no doubt about it, a vote for me is not a rubber stamp on any project you bring.
Time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hubler?
So my question is, mayor often spends 10 to 30 hours per week during the workday attending to city business. Do you have a capacity in your schedule to be available some weekdays during business hours to perform the duties of mayor?
Absolutely. Give me a second to catch my breath. It was nine and a half minutes when I first did it, so I had to shave off some time here. But yeah, as a former council member, former deputy mayor, and attending all the regional council events that I did, the timeframe is not an issue. My schedule is very consistent. I'm off at 2:30 every day, so I can have weekly office hours, plus I'm off every other Friday. So along with that, I can be onsite during those times. And then, you know, the Tuesday nights are something I, I and my family are consistently used to, so that's not an issue.
Member Fullerton?
At a recent council meeting, it was brought up that whoever we appoint as mayor should be electable. So for the sake of transparency and respecting the voice of the people of Bonnie Lake, have you ever run for a public office and lost an election?
I have ran for public office three times, both here in the city of Bonnie Lake, both winning for the city council, and I lost one election last year for school board.
And my question is, retaining the seat, why are you the best candidate to be able to retain your seat once you're appointed?
Well, as you can hear and see from the experience and resumes that I sent over for you, I definitely have the experience for that. I believe I have the support of the staff and I know that I have a vision and leadership capabilities to make sure that we can get back to normal. Right now, there's a very weird vibe going on around the city that it's made it uncomfortable the last couple of years here for council or for staff, for council. And obviously, it's translated onto our citizens, but we need to make sure our vision and plans are implemented. I think I'm the right person for that. I think I've got the support to make that happen and be reelected.
Thank you. What have you learned from going through this process?
Well, this particular process for mayor is that the, no matter what happens tonight, the council and staff needs to figure out a plan for doing this a little more smoothly and more efficiently. That's the biggest thing. But I've been familiar with the process, having gone through it four times, being on your side of the seat too.
Thank you. Mr. McLeibens?
Condemnation.
Exactly. What conditions do you support condemnation?
Well, it's a two-part question, right? Because the first thing is you have to support condemnation to get to the point of discussing condemnation. We all learned that when we were doing the creek. So in support of actually taking someone's land, I wouldn't be. But I understand that as a council, there is a time that you may have to vote on condemnation just to be able to allow staff to talk to the homeowners and start the negotiations. I think if negotiations do have to happen, they do need to be fair or better than market value for the land you set the city will need in that case. But as far as any, just any need for condemnation without knowing the actual extent of the public purpose of it, you know, I'd have to refrain from that, answering that until I knew exactly what the need was. But I wouldn't support it, just willy-nilly taking people's land just for the fun of it. And I know this council wouldn't even entertain something like that. And as mayor, you know, it's something that the city staff would bring forward, but nothing that, you know, would really have a a voice or an opinion on at that point, you know, it'd be up to you guys to decide what condemnation is and how you guys would interact it.
Mr. Baldwin?
All right. How does the executive branch stay in its lane in relation to the legislative body?
Well, you guys, you guys really vote on everything. You guys are the purse strings of the administrative branch. You know, we have a judicial branch and, you know, we're just a small, small version of what our federal government is. But, you know, the interaction with the council from the mayor's and administration seat is not the primary focus. It's, I don't want to say secondary. It's one of the jobs, but it's not the sole job. You know, there's staff, there's, there's HR stuff to deal with, there's growth, there's budgetary things, you know, all of those things are very time-consuming that would really, really help prevent any lane transfer into the legislative side. And the trust of the people is with the seven of you that are elected to do that. So, you know, I would, as I would respect the process, being that I've, you know, had to argue with mayors before that were, you know, trying to have a little scope creep on their lane. So I would totally support you guys on, you know, step back and let you guys do what you do. If you enact something that is brought forward that I supported, great. If you don't, you know, we'll figure out another way to either bring it back towards more appealing to the council or there's more compromise in getting it done.
No questions.
No questions.
All right. All right. Well, cool. I've got a few more minutes then. Debbie, how much time do I have?
Four minutes, 20 seconds.
Thank you. All right. So like I was saying, in conclusion, make no doubt about it, a vote for me is not a rubber stamp for any project that you bring forward. There is no quid pro quo based on the results of tonight. I will always speak my mind along with standing up for what I believe is right. I will always advocate for those without a voice and ensure they're heard. I will be compassionate, courteous, and striving towards common ground and consensus with every person in this city, including this council. I don't believe there's any problem so large that we can't find common ground to start building a foundation for our future. Let me go back to see what I crossed out here. Your decision tonight will determine the leadership and direction of this city and community for the next 20 months. And with the upcoming budget, a leader whose decision will have a lasting impact beyond that. So I applaud you guys for all the hard decision you have to make tonight. And I sit here before you tonight as the broadly supported, more experienced, and day one-ready applicant that can lead Bonnie Lake. I ask that, I ask for your trust and faith and vote for appointment of mayor. And I appreciate you taking the time to interview me. And I want to say thank you to my wife, my daughter, and all those who encouraged me to be here this evening. Without all that support, I would probably be sitting at home trying to remember to take out my garbage tonight. And with that, I yield the remainder of my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Next is Broderick Ford. Is he here?
Oh, which one was he? Was he the high school?
He's the high school.
He's the guy called and hung up on me.
Oh, really? Okay.
He's not, are you sure he's not here?
Don't hear him.
Maybe he'll come in later.
So, all right, we'll move on to Chris Blanco. Say your name right?
You did. Yes, thank you. Honestly, I don't have anything prepared as well as everyone else has done. So actually, this has been a humbling opportunity to be with everyone and here with everyone so much experience. I'm Chris Blanco. Been living in Bonnie Lake for the last 19 years. Family, been married for 27 years, all three kids, all of them are graduates of Sumner High School. Currently in the Washington Army National Guard and the Director of Human Resources. So I've been serving in the Washington Army National Guard for a better part of 28 years. So that's really my experience. So it's kind of a humbling opportunity to really just be part of this, this experience. I've actually commanded a cavalry squadron, 500 soldiers deployed twice and culminating as a Colonel in the United States Army. So I did prepare some of the questions that you guys have asked. So why do I want to serve? Well, this has been home for the, for the last few years and it's been, it'll probably be an opportunity for me to extend my military service into civil service. And I feel like that's kind of the next step in my career is to really serve the residents of Bonnie Lake. The other ideas that I've had is the opportunity to directly influence municipal policies initiatives, improve the quality of life for our Bonnie Lake residents, and for me to extend my military leadership and a chance to lead and represent our community. What experiences, talents, or skills do I have? Really, the servant leadership in a variety of staff roles and direct at level roles that I've had through my military experience, strategic and critical thinking. I'm a graduate of the US Army War College. Got my MBA through the University of Phoenix and a Gonzaga University graduate. So I have a lot of problem-solving skills through collaboration and teamwork and being able to be adaptable and resilient. I think a lot of these qualities and strengths that I would bring are proven track record of leadership, responsibility, and a dedication to serving others. What other community issues or particular interests do I might have? I actually don't have a whole lot of city service experience. My military service and helping out the family and the kids have really taken up a lot of time and opportunity for me. So just participating and volunteering through the kids' school with JA BizTown and just helping the kids go through MRFC soccer has been taking up a lot of time. So I don't have a whole lot of civil service experience. But I understand that transparency and accountability in government operations is important. Allowing the residents to kind of see what we do on a regular basis is important. What experience do I have serving people manager or an executive? So again, I've been I've been the Washington Army National Guard for over 28 years. And and the discipline and the structure the military has provided me will help me in a government role, adhering to policies, regulations, and law, as well as contingency planning. I understand that the need for teamwork and collaboration to analyze problems and develop effective solutions that I've found to be successful. Not every soldier's the same, just like every resident's the same. I probably won't be able to answer anything with condemnation or with, I forgot your your Angela Baldwin, Council Baldwin's question, but.
One minute?
There's a lot of things that I probably just don't have, but I'm willing to learn and just collaborate with the team and the council members. I'll exceed my my last minute there.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hubler.
My question. The mayor often spends 30 hours per week during the workday attending to city business. Do you have capacity in your schedule to be available some weekdays during business hours to perform the duties of mayor?
I can with proper leave notice. I'm currently still serving in the Washington Army National Guard, so I work full time. We do have Mondays off, which is nice, but with regular planned leave, I can take that time off. I intend to retire in July of 2025 and then don't know what's going to take me after that. But yes, through proper planning, I can take the time off necessary.
Councilmember Fullerton.
At a recent council meeting, it was brought up that whoever we appoint as mayor should be electable. So for the sake of transparency and respecting the voice of the people of Bonnie Lake, have you ever run for public office and lost an election?
I have not.
Councilmember Roach. First, thanks for stepping up, taking interest.
Yeah.
It's great. So my question is, assuming you're appointed, what makes you the best candidate to retain that seat once you run for reelection?
Councilman Roach, actually, I don't know if I'm the best candidate for the job. I know that I would do a very good job and a very outstanding job between now and November. But there's a lot of outstanding citizens that live in Bonnie Lake and any one of them could probably be the mayor in November. But what I do need to do is garner the trust of the residents between now and November in order to become a viable candidate. There's a lot of things that I don't know and I would have to learn. So to answer that question, sir, I just, I don't know. I just don't know if what I would bring to the table as a military officer and professional that being the mayor for the city would be the best thing. And it would just have to be getting the trust from the residents, for sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, you do great, by the way. But thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
My question is, what have you learned from going through this process?
A lot, actually. Coming prepared is one thing. I didn't realize that everyone had a prepared statement. That was, that's interesting. I actually found out the that this opening existed through social media, which is probably how not the right way of, if I was connected a little bit more, I think I would have probably been a little bit more involved in understanding the the gravity of what I was about ready to take myself into. As I'm preparing for retirement, I put a resume together, answered the questions. I felt like this was probably the next step for me to kind of figure something out. And it was just by chance, this opportunity presented itself. So I learned a lot about just being prepared for situations like this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McLeanens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
So condemnation is in Washington State is the legal proceeding that we all think of as eminent domain when a local jurisdiction will eventually take control of somebody's property.
Sure.
So under what conditions would you consider condemnation appropriate?
You know, I've been listening to the questions or the answers from the previous applicants here, and and I don't know what any of that means. And so there's a lot of opinions and making informed decisions by a lot of different people and committees and work groups that would have to help inform us to make those types of decisions. I don't have an informed opinion on what that what that is and what that could mean to the city of Bonnie Lake at this time. But for the most part, it it sounds like it's it's a pretty big deal. And so I would have to wrap my arms around that pretty quickly.
That's where Baldwin.
Yeah, thank you for coming forward. I know that I've been in that seat before and it's a bit terrifying.
It is.
I do want you to know that humility and a teachable spirit go a very long way. I would not underestimate those things at all. My question is basically in relation to how does the mayor, being in the executive branch, stay in his lane or her lane with their duties without moving then into the legislative body, which would be us as the council members who are the policymakers?
Sure. I think that was one of the questions I'd asked, and I think I put something together. And I believe that the role of the mayor and the city council have to have some mutual respect and understanding, move common and shared goals about separating them. I know that I I work in for the administrative staff, and I think that's my goal, to make sure that they're a fully functioning team. And then to allow the council members and hear your guys' opinion and take your guys' work and effort and to then help move that along into the city or onto the administrative staff. But past that, I'm not, I I don't know much more than that. Sorry, ma'am.
Thank you.
Senator Baldwin.
Thank you. Yeah, and I don't have any questions, Chris, but I I do, you know, congratulate you on wanting to actually apply. So very encouraging, you know, appreciate you taking my phone call and chatting with me earlier, you know. I haven't been asking questions from the other applicants because, you know, clearly we know them, we work with them daily basis. But it's it's a testament to our city and hopefully you'll agree that it's a great place to be.
Absolutely.
And, you know, that somebody of your caliber would actually even, you know, want to join the circus, right?
Yes.
It's amazing. So I'm just, it's it's just amazing. So I'm very, thank you for applying and hopefully maybe you'll be the selected candidate or maybe you'll not move too far away and stay connected to the city and try again.
I, this is a tremendous opportunity. I can't, again, it was just by chance that I saw this and it was just something that I felt like I had to do. You know, the the wife and the family, like, we have more time to to dedicate to the city and, you know, you never could find more time. So I do appreciate the opportunity and it is kind of interesting to see how many people.
Hopefully, everybody read your background because it's extensive. It's it's amazing, the people that know, you know, can read that stuff and understand what you went through in your service and what it means to our country is amazing.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Excuse me, you have, was it a 05? You're 05?
I'm a 06, yeah, so.
Oh, right.
Oddly enough, I'm also applying to be the a general in the National Guard Bureau, so depending on where that takes me, but we'll we'll see where this goes. This is, this is a good step. First.
Congratulations.
First step.
Good things for you, yeah.
Thank you. You're, you're welcome. You're welcome. I I'll concede the rest of my time unless the team has any questions for me. I don't really have anything else to add. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, you're welcome.
All right, next is Esteban Arbahal. That's correct. Oh, I'm I'm doing your, then, okay, thank you. Jump.
Hey, just like the previous applicant, it's very humbling to hear everyone of the previous applicants and their experience, but I wanted to throw my hat in the ring and I'll just go ahead and get started. So I'm Esteban Arbahal. I'm a resident of Bonnie Lake for the past two years. I'm a senior product manager at ANSYS, and that's an engineering simulation software company. My background is in biomedical engineering and optomechanical engineering. I've been at my company for eight years and I lead a team of engineers and developers in designing new features for customers to take on complex simulation tasks. That's my quick background. But before I delve into my thoughts and aspirations for the city, I wanted to extend my gratitude to the city council for providing this opportunity for public engagement. It's through initiatives like this that give residents like myself, that we feel like we have a voice and can contribute for the betterment of our community. So as I started my application for the mayorship, I found myself grappling with doubts and questions. I asked myself, like, as a relatively new resident with no prior involvement in local politics, what could I possibly contribute? However, amidst these uncertainties, I found clarity in a fundamental purpose of local government, and that is to serve as representation of the residents it governs. Beyond the complexities of bureaucratic structures and official titles, titles, we are all interconnected as neighbors in this city. Each of us has made a conscious decision to call this place our home, to contribute in our own unique ways to the fabric fabric of this community. In Bonnie Lake, we are not, we are not only bound by shared spaces, but by shared aspirations and challenges. And it's within that context that I find the purpose and drive to step forward and apply. While I may be a relative newcomer, my commitment to the well being and prosperity of Bonnie Lake is significant because it is my home. I have always believed in the importance of clear and open communication, accountability, and transparency in governance, and these principles have guided me throughout my personal and professional endeavors, and they will continue to serve as the cornerstone of an approach to mayorship. My desire is not seeking personal gain or recognition, but as a representative of the diverse voices and perspectives that make up our community. I believe in the power of collaboration and asking for help and trying to understand each other's perspectives. The decisions are typically never easy. There's never enough resources, never enough time, but I know that we can all try to do the best we can to make well informed decisions that are in the best interests of the city. My communication priority also extends to improving transparency regarding allocation of tax dollars. Residents in the city who are often acutely aware they are being taxed, but often do not know how their money is being utilized for the betterment of our community. While reviewing the budget, I can see efforts are being taken to address important issues in the city. However, it's essential to recognize many residents may not have the time nor the inclination to go through a budget document line by line. To bridge this gap, I'm committed to enhancing communication channels by providing accessible avenues so residents can understand how their tax dollars are being used. This can include implementing user friendly budget summaries, perhaps how town hall meetings, and leveraging digital platforms to disseminate the information more effectively. In looking to the future, I am excited about the prospect of exploring innovative avenues to elevate our city's profile, much like all the previous applicants talking about how our proximity to Mount Rainier is a unique aspect of.
One minute?
Thank you. But it can also relegate Bonne Lake as a stopover on the way to the mountain. I feel that there exists potential to make the city a destination in its own right, and achieving this vision will require concerted effort from our city, active engagement from residents, and local entrepreneurship. But I believe it's important for the long term prosperity of the city. In closing, I'd like to once again thank the council for your consideration. As neighbors working together, I am confident that Bonnie Lake can seize opportunities, overcome challenges, and build a future that reflects the apparition aspirations of its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hubler.
To say, I really like this process that every applicant gets to be part of this. The mayor often spends 10 to 30 hours per week during the workday attending to city business. Do you have the capacity in your schedule to be available some weekdays during business hours to perform the duties of mayor?
Yes, I work remotely and my schedule is often with international collaborators, so I have time during the day.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fullerton.
At a recent city council meeting, it was brought up that whoever we appoint as mayor should be electable. So for the sake of transparency and respecting the voice of the people of Bonnie Lake, have you ever run for a public office and lost an election?
I have not.
Senator Roach.
Stephen, thank you also for stepping up and putting yourself forward. My question is, assuming you get the appointment, what makes you the best candidate to retain the mayorship when you run for reelection or for election?
Yeah, I I think to, my goal as being mayor may not be getting reelected, but executing a vision of the council outputs. If if I am deemed electable or reelectable, then I guess we can have that discussion at that point. But at this, as a relative newcomer, I don't have anything for that.
I would also say thank you for putting yourself out here for for doing this. What have you learned from going through this process?
Well, it's been very interesting to look up the issues and that have been affecting the city through news, which is one bias, I suspect, and then listening to everyone here has been very enlightening and I think provides that information in a lot of context that wasn't, that's just left out of articles. I also had the pleasure of going through the publicly available budget document, hence my complaint of a line by line thing. But it is interesting to see how the how the tax dollars are used. And that's something I probably would not have done as a normal, everyday resident, so that's been nice. And also learning about all the other applicants has been very, very enlightening.
Thank you. Councilmember McLeanens.
You can provide feedback on our website.
Excuse me?
Our website's always kind of a pain point.
Oh, yeah. I think you guys have a Google Chrome only website option enabled.
Tech tip. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, forgive me. Thank you for for applying and and taking questions. So condemnation in Washington State is the process of eminent domain. It is when the local jurisdiction takes personal property from somebody, right? Under what conditions would you condone condemnation?
So condemnation here, for that to come up would have to be, I think, a last resort because oftentimes you're taking, the city would be taking something that is bought and paid for by a resident. And oftentimes, it's one of the most expensive assets that a resident puts into it. I can't give guidelines from this chair in telling you when a situation in the future might come up, you know, which way that decision would go. But it would be, the decision would be made in collaboration with council and and with detailed find to be with detailed finding to be a data driven decision.
Senator Baldwin.
Hello, Esteban.
Hello.
I'm sure you heard my explanation just a few minutes ago about my question, but basically, how does the mayor stay in its lane in relation to the council member, council, which are the policymakers of the city?
Yeah, so as I understand it and as I see it, the mayor and council relationship is very similar to software development in that a vision is set up and then, you know, my job is to execute on that vision. Just like in, as I understand, the mayor and council, city council relationship is that the vision is set up by the city council and executed by the mayor. And so that's the extent of how I understand that relationship to be.
Thank you. First of all, man.
Thank you, yeah, no, and I and I won't ask any questions of you either because, again, you know, we chatted on the phone extensively, so I kind of went through all my stuff with the people earlier. But again, you know, thank you also with other folks for applying, you know, all these people in here are probably residents or wannabe residents or should be residents. So, you know, hopefully we'll be engaged in everything in the future. Very impressive, you know, your background is excellent. Is it, isn't A&amp;M Texas Longhorns or is that what it is?
Pixie and M is the Aggies. UT are the Longhorns. That's okay.
That's okay. Exactly.
That was only grad school, so.
Yeah, no, nice. It's impressive to have individuals that are wanting to apply to the city, right? So you can see that there's, you know, it's a great place. Otherwise, we wouldn't have individuals like ex council members want to come back and yourself.
I decided to leave.
Officers.
Yes.
Great, so please stay engaged.
I will.
No matter what happens.
Yep, absolutely.
Still have just over four minutes.
There you go.
No, there's any other questions, otherwise I can see the rest of my time. I know everyone.
We're not allowed to ask any other questions, but.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
Thank you all once again for the opportunity. It's much appreciated and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, moving down my sheet here on what to do. Council, do we want to go into executive session?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we will now go into. So we will now go into executive session. So 15 minutes for RCW 4230 110 1H to discuss the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office with action to file.
Excuse me? Yes, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to thank the public and the candidates for coming. This is like a big deal for the city. Appreciate all the support. And when you look at, well, when you look at the caliber of people that we have, you know that this is not going to be, right? So thank you for not making my job east.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll now go into executive session.
Thank you, everyone. We're asking for another 15 minutes. So just to let you know, 15 minutes.
Deputy Mayor Carter came out and asked for another 15 minutes in executive session.
Oh, yeah.
Counsel is asking for five more minutes in executive session. Five more minutes.
Yeah, if you want to go through the process, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Oh, that's what he's waiting for. So the process for taking nominations and voting is that any council member that wants to nominate, one of the candidates would raise their hand and be called on by the deputy mayor, make a nomination. Nominations do not need to be seconded. And then, once no other council members raising their hand to make a nomination, you just take them in the order that you're called upon. When there are no more nominations, the deputy mayor will call three times to ask if there's any more nominations. If there are no more nominations, he will close the floor to nominations. At that point, the council members will vote in order of the nominations. The first nominee will be voted on. Council members, if they desire, can make a comment about that before voting. If there's more than one nomination, we will definitely want to do roll call votes. Vote to cast a vote for that person, you would just vote yes when the city clerk calls your name and asks how you vote. If anyone that gets four votes is then deemed to be elected mayor by the council, and the voting ends at that point. Happy to answer any other questions about process.
Counsel.
Do we go in alphabetical order for nominations?
Or? No, the nominations are on the order that the deputy mayor calls upon the council member to make a nomination. The roll call, I'm not sure, city clerk Shaneman is on the line, or we have the city administrator here. I'm not sure what order the clerk will call the roll to take the votes. Oh, okay, it's based on the roll call list, which is alphabetical as far as casting the votes. Sorry. All cities do it differently. Some do it by seat number, other alphabetically, et cetera.
Good. All right. Please state your nominations. Councilmember McLeimans.
I nominate Terry Carter.
Any more nominations? Councilmember Fullerton.
I nominate Deputy Mayor Terry Carter.
Any more nominations? Any more nominations? Sorry, I've said this three times. Any more nominations? Okay, no more nominations. The nominations are now closed. We will now vote. I guess we can do it by saying aye.
Do you have an opportunity to speak?
Yes.
Yeah, you can take comments, and also, since there's only one nominee, you can vote by acclamation. You don't need to do the roll call unless the vote is in doubt.
Sorry, yes. So opportunity, please.
So there is no situation in which this hasn't been very carefully vetted in the council. I'm thrilled that we have such a rich pool of people. While there's no perfect candidate, we do have great candidates. Very difficult decision. And in light of that, it's also with clear eyes that we look at this and say, this is a decision that council is making. So factors like having somebody who's already an elected official is important. Having that in their past, factors such, and then the realization that this is only less than a two-year term that's going to be filled. And it will give us an opportunity to understand the capacity for leadership that's really there or not there. And the people will have the opportunity to decide. So that is part of the calculus that's in my brain. I took an extraordinary amount of time this week, which was extremely inconvenient. I don't know about you guys, but there was a lot. I want to thank Councilmember Evans for giving me the opportunity to read all of those great things. I think if your daughter, you should save those, and your daughter should read those in like three years and know what a great individual you are and that we love you so much. That's a fabulous testimony. Likewise, the time to talk to our law enforcement professionals in the city in Bonnie Lake. I had the privilege of doing that and reading lots of police reports. That's always thrilling, right? So it is with that background and that work, I can say I've done my homework, and I can cast this vote with certainty.
You want us? Councilmember Baldwin.
Yes, I've had an opportunity to look over everything, including things that were submitted by the public, things that I have read. I've literally read everything. I think I have a unique perspective in that my husband is a police officer. And I was able to sit down with him and look through some of the things that were being set forth before me, and much of it is unfortunate. With that being said, I really cannot explain the person that is before me, that I have worked with in the past year and a half as a legislator. And Terry Carter has had a, remained neutral in times of heat. I mean, if you saw last week's meeting, he was able to chair a meeting while things were being said to him. And again, I can understand why some things are being said to him as well. And so on that side, I definitely understand where the public is coming from. But really, like, I had to make a decision based on what I've seen. I think that there's a lot in, you know, amazing shining letters, certificates, and awards and things like that. But really, like, you have to look at what a person has been doing and what they have been doing before you. And I have seen him, again, it does seem odd and opposite of the man that I know. And I don't know him with blind eyes. I have definitely seen him have humility. He works with staff in a way that even if, you know, he is having to deal with things that are difficult and maybe he doesn't even agree with, he has an uncanny ability to be able to work with the staff in a way that they feel seen by him. And that's probably all opposite from the things that we've read. But I have, I've only seen a man full of integrity and trustworthiness. And so with that being said, this was very difficult. I was upset that this decision had to be difficult. But even then, I know that I am, I am making, I have looked through everything, and I'm making a decision that I feel like is sound.
Thank you. Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, I second and third Councilmember McLeimans and Councilmember Baldwin. The man that I know that has been Deputy Carter for two years and then was just literally renominated and appointed to deputy mayor just two months ago with confidence from the council because he has been doing such an excellent job. It is unfortunate, you know, I didn't like having to read through all of the documents that were sent. But everybody has a past, and we can't always judge people based off of everything that is in their closet. We all have stuff in our closet. What I can judge by is the character that I know, the man that I know, and his knowledge and his ability to not only work with staff, but also he's single-handedly brought in some investors that want to work with the city on possibly getting parks built in expedient amount of time that would have been impossible for the city to do. We have to do a study. We have, it takes us, you know, six months to a year to do a study anytime we want to get something done. We have to get approval. We have to find out if we can get the money from the taxpayers. And we have investors that were, that stepped up and were willing to negotiate certain things. I can't talk about everything because we don't even know where this is going to go. But there's a possibility that, you know, we could get Bonnie Lake some pretty cool parks and some other things because of what Deputy Mayor Carter was able to negotiate with private and public entities. That in and of itself speaks volumes to me. But I have, I have been treated with the utmost respect and dignity, and I have been treated as if I am an equal, which I am. I have one of seven votes, and I have been treated as an equal. There have been in the past where I didn't feel I was treated as an equal, and now I, I'm just thrilled that I get to say kind words about the man that's been so respectful and getting so much done in this city. So this is not taken lightly. This was not easy. And I just appreciate you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fullerton. Any further comments? No. All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of Deputy Mayor Carter being appointed to mayor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Need to do a roll call, or are you good? You got it? Okay. All right.
Yep.
Okay.
We have a mayor.
So we're good. Okay.
Yay.
All right, so now, yes, need to do an oath. Deputized Deputy Clerk McEwen will now administer the oath. Super awkward. Yeah, I guess.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Terry Carter, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States
and the laws of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws
Constitution and laws.
of the state of Washington and all local ordinances
and all local ordinances.
and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties
and discharge the duties
of the office of mayor
of the office of mayor.
according to the law
according to the law.
and the best of my ability.
and the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And then the second.
So the council can also appoint a new deputy mayor tonight, or they can defer till next week.
Can see on the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, yes, that leads us to, sorry?
Number eight.
Yeah, what I have here before that is, since we have no deputy mayor, do I have any nominations for deputy mayor? Councilmember Baldwin.
I nominate Dan Swatman.
Second.
All right, any other nominations? Do I need to do it three times, or are we good?
I nominate Gwendolyn Fullerton.
Second.
Nominations don't need a second. Just the same procedure you guys just used. And yes, you will call three times for more nomination.
Any other nominations? Believe that's it, so. All those in favor of Councilmember Swatman becoming the deputy mayor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Your deputy mayor.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it, councilmembers. Hopefully I can-
Yeah.
I depend on you holding me to-
All right. Yeah, we appreciate all of you sticking through all this. So now, we have citizen comments. This is your time to address the council on the items that are on tonight's agenda. The city will now enable the video and microphone for those attending virtually. You will need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person, and to move to the virtual comments afterwards. You have five minutes. State your name and address for the record, please. Hello? We get that on?
Only for you.
No, Justin, you always had a word on the mic.
All right, Justin Evans, former council member, 1786 111th Street, toward East Bonnie Lake, Washington. I just wanted to say congratulations to Mayor Carter now, and I wish you the best of luck. And I wish the council the best of luck and the staff and everyone else, so congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay. Oh, we do have somebody else.
Council Mayor Dan Dekker, 2070 Street, East Bonnie Lake, Washington. I'm a past council member, and I want to congratulate Mayor Terry Carter for becoming the mayor tonight. And thank you, council, for electing him. And I believe that we need to have a little bit more control over ourselves during council meetings and realize what we say has more depth than what might realize and turn out to be harmful in some way in the election arena. So please, council, be a little bit more diligent in your job. And I'm referencing mostly Article 10 of your council packet. So please, take care and be more cautious. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Councilmember- Justin Decoma. Been boss for the last three years. Serve you well, just like you served my- Congratulations, Terry.
Thank you, chief.
Anyone else for the good of the order? Right? Oh. Always wait till the last.
My name's Dave Morel. I'm county councilperson.
Yes, thanks for coming, Dave.
Thank you for the opportunity to watch the process play out. I think this was the best way to handle it. And I congratulate Mayor Carter. And just for everyone in the room, you now have a vacant council position.
We do.
How are you going to fill that? Anyway, thank you. You know, it's, it's nice to see the process work out. No one likes to be, you know, the inners of it. It's kind of like they always say, making of a sausage or a hot dog.
Exactly.
Not good, but I think the end results ended up being a pool of candidates, you know?
Standing there.
Great. And I appreciate those who haven't engaged in, in the political process before. Thank you for coming out and seeing that. Represented well in your community as well served by the diversity that comes out. So thank you for that and.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for the good of the order? Want to make sure nobody else before I go on. All right, we will now start those that are virtual. You have five minutes. State your name and address for the record, please. All right, it looks like we're, nobody else is there? All right, the city will now disable all video and microphones for those attending virtually. Thank you, everyone who attended. And again, thank you again to all of the candidates that applied and came out here and, you know, went in public to do an interview. This is a really awkward thing to do. I applaud all of you for going through this process. And councilmember Morel is correct, we currently have a city council seat that is open. There will be a process similar to this one actually to fill that seat in the future. I'm not exactly sure on the date it's going to close yet, but I think it's, I want to say it's about a month or so.
Is it already open now?
Uh, I think it'll probably be open tomorrow.
There you go.
That works. So if you're still interested in being a part of this unique circus, please apply. You guys all represented yourself very, very well. So thank you. Uh, yes, councilmember.
Question for, I guess, us and staff, the, as far as getting the word out, I know this was a shortened, you know, week-long abbreviated version. And I know at least one of the candidates said they, they found it through Facebook. But are we going to be using lots of methods to get the word out so that we have opportunity for people to see that and respond?
That would certainly be my intent and that's what I would push for. Yes.
Great.
Seeing no other business before us, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.